We take a couple, three hours in the afternoon and work through, work through our budget list and try and come up with something that's going to work. I'm going to turn some time over to Keith Johansson here in a moment, but before we do, I just like to give the board a little bit of a refresher course on how this works for us. We have, we base, we base our new budget on last year's budget plus changes. So what we do is through the directors, and this will extend out to principals as well, in various ways, we ask everybody to bring a list of needs to the table. And once those, and we, you know, if you call it a, you know, we ask, we tell them, don't, don't cut any, I mean, they, they obviously have a lot of triage that happens on their own, where things are brought to them maybe by principals or different teacher groups. And they say, you know, that's just not something that's going to happen this year. There's, there's some of that that happens for sure, just things that are not regulars. But beyond that, we, we go ahead and we put everything on the list. And that's, that's how it's certainly been done this year. So we wanted, we wanted the board to understand kind of where this starts and give you as much input into that, into the process as we can. So that's what we have in front of us. Keith will kind of go over the parameters of what, what's on this page. It's also going to be up on the screen when we get to it. And then we will, we will just take this line by line and talk about each item. And some discussions will be longer than others and we'll, we'll work our way down through them. So we're planning on wrapping this up sometime before five. It may go quickly, we're not sure. We usually do plan about a three hour block for it. And we'll plan, we'll have it be started and see where that takes us. And if we get done early, we'll take a little break and then come back at five for the regular study session. Are there any questions on process or procedure? It's, it's going to be pretty much an open discussion, line by line. If there are things that you, as a board member, have thought about or have been approached about, that this, you know, this would, this is a great time to think about as well. So there's no, there's no, nothing magical about it being on the list or not. If there, if there are other things we, we want to discuss or something comes up from, you know, from the admin group, that's fine too, we'll, we'll discuss it. Everything's on the table.
Except for Jason. No more from Jason. Jason, you're done. He's shot this.
I am not nearly the culprit in making me out to be.
You're off to the big spender?
No.
No, the big spender's not here. She's in St. George.
Just kidding. Claire.
He's Claire.
Claire, you can't defend yourself. You're going to see.
She has quite a bit on the list.
We, we told her she's off to a, off to a bank. Her first year she walked in quite a big glass. So that's how that goes. All righty. If there's nothing from the board members, you're good. Keith, go ahead.
Okay. So you have in front of you, front and back, and the first thing we're going to talk about is, is this, for lack of a better term, this is just our preparation worksheet. This is our starting point. And as Paul talked about, we talk about the current year budget. This current year is fiscal year 22 and how it's looking so far. I mean, we're three-fourths of the way through the year. And so we have, we have a pretty good feel for where revenues and expenses are going to be. We started the, we started the year on July 1st of 2022, 2021, sorry, sorry, with a fund balance of $13,460. And I'm projecting that the revenues for the current year are going to be just under $90,000, $89,542, which by the way is very close to, it's just about $600,000 more than we had budgeted. And, you know, when we, when we set the budget, we don't know what our October 1 count's going to be that the state funding's all based on. We don't know what our assessed valuation's going to be that the, that the property taxes are based on. So that's, I think that's a pretty good guess to be only $600,000 more in revenues than we had budgeted. Our projected expenditures are $87,318, which is a little bit less than we had budgeted. And so this, I'm projecting that we're going to end this fiscal year with a fund balance of $50,684, which means that we added $2,223,000 to our fund balance for this year. And so that's what I consider the starting point going into next year. Meaning that if we didn't get, if we made no changes, if we had no additional state revenues, if we had no additional property taxes and no additional expenditures, that's, that's what we're going to add to our fund balance every year. But obviously that doesn't happen. There's some, you know, a million and one changes that happen throughout the year. But that's our starting point going into next year.
Keith, do we typically always add to it or not necessarily?
No. We have lately, we, there were some years back in the 2007, 2008, 2009, when the economy had such a turn that we didn't add to our fund balance. There was a time, in fact, early in the 2000s where we were down to almost a zero fund balance.
So it has been a priority of the, of the board and previous boards, even to the, to the three of you, that we need to have a better fund balance. You see it as a, no different than, you know, being judicious with your home budget and having some money in the bank. And if, you know, one way I like to look at it, when we start thinking, oh wow, there's all this money in there. If you start thinking of it as monthly expenses, you know, how many months would that get us? If everything collapsed and the state didn't send us out the, the next installment, how long can we run? You know, what's, what's our monthly output compared to our fund balance? And, you know, we're, we're getting there. I mean, $15 million's better than probably we've ever had. Still on a percentage basis and on a, you know, how long we could live on something like that, it's, it's pretty short.
It's only about a month, right?
Actually, it's, that's about two and a half months worth of payroll.
That's just payroll?
Yes.
And this is the M&amp;O budget, the 92%, right?
Right.
About 92% of this is payroll.
And, and so thanks for bringing that up Superintendent, because all we're talking about today is the, the general fund. We're not talking capital.
Right.
Or debt service, or food service, or student activities, anything like that. The main engine that runs this place is the general fund. That's what puts the teachers in the, in the classrooms and the bus drivers behind the wheel and the secretaries at their stations. So all we're talking about is the general fund. Although, you know, Superintendent mentioned that, that the directors go out and they meet with, with the principals and they get this list that we're going to talk about soon. They also do that same process. Francis and Sean go out and meet with all the principals and talk about the individual buildings and what capital needs they have. And we talked about that when we adopted the, or when we approved the capital.
Expenditure.
Expenditure for projects a month ago.
We keep that out of about three years. So we, we always have a three-year schedule of capital outlay. And, and so if you want to, if you typically, if you want, here, and we don't just strictly leave out the principals. We've got people that are more experts of what the buildings need as far as maybe a roof where, you know, the principal may not be in the loop on that so much, but, but the principal would be in the loop on some classroom remodels or the carpet or whatever. So they, they meet in unison with the principal and they, you know, if you, if you want something to be on the capital list, it usually has to go on and be there for three years, unless it's more of a, an immediate need or even an emergency.
Okay. So with that starting point of $2.2 million, we're going to have some increased revenues for next year. The legislature approved a 6% increase to the WPU, weighted pupil unit. And so we don't have the legislative estimate yet from the State Board of Education, but that's just, that's basically just under $2 million, $1 million 860, that will increase our revenues next year over the current year. And then property tax increases historically have been, you know, with so much growth going on, pretty significant. And I'm just estimating just over $4 million in increases in property taxes.
Is that just kind of estimated based on last year, year before, just kind of estimated what the increase was?
Yeah. There've been years where it's been bigger. And so this is kind of a, similar to last year.
So it's about three, I think you said last year it's 3% to 5% is what you usually aim for.
It's more like 8% to 10%.
8% to 10%?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's almost $6 million more in revenue next year that we're projecting. And there's so many moving parts here that it's, like I say, we don't even have our state revenue legislative estimate yet. So that's our best guess at this, as of today, we're, we're estimating an additional $6 million in revenue. The positions that we're going to talk about after we get done with this sheet that's on the back of yours add up to $2,766. And we'll, so we'll hit those in great detail in just a moment. The health insurance increase was quite a disappointment, to be honest with you. We've, we've had two years where it's been a negative, and actually decreased, negative increase. It's actually decreased and we're going to pay for it this year with a, they're estimating a 21.9% increase in our health insurance premium.
Wow.
A lot of that is related to COVID, not, not so much the care of COVID as the effects of COVID where people weren't going to the doctors. They were putting off some things because of COVID. They, they weren't getting, anyway, we've, we've had some major claims in the last six to nine months. And so not just, and I'm not just talking our district, I'm talking about.
The group.
The pool of where you're in. And so that $2,442,000 is basically almost 22% increase in premiums this year. So that pretty much, right there eats up the, the increase in revenues. So after you take out those expenses, we have about $3 million to, to deal with the great unknown of negotiations with the, the three groups, teachers classified and the administrators.
But Keith, if we spent, if I understand you, Matt, if we spent the whole $3 million, we wouldn't be adding to our general fund though.
For the next year.
For next year. I'll try. So our general fund would stay the same.
Right. If we.
If we spent that $3 million. If we spent the excess from this year, increased revenues minus expenses, that's where you come up with the $3 million.
Right. The first thing that, when we talk about negotiations is the cost of step and lane. That's where, you know, teachers are getting degrees and credit hours and moving up the salary schedule as far as lane changes. They're also getting step changes as they spend more time in the district. And so that cost has historically been like 2.5%. So that's right there. And these, these numbers, by the way, also include the cost of benefits, the increased benefits that go with the increased salaries, like retirement and FICA. So that's $1.4 million. So if we just did step and lane, we would add $1,579,000 to our fund balance next year and we'd end at $17,263. Now for every percent that we agreed to in negotiations, it costs about $642,500 for all three groups. And so if we did a, if we did a 3% raise, that would cost $1,927,000 and we'd actually use a little fund balance of $348,000. To be brutally honest and upfront, I'm, I'm pretty careful and conservative in my estimates. So I think that our revenues are going to go up more than that 5.9 million. And, but those, and then those expenses are, they are what they are, but I try to hedge my bets a little bit and, and just to be totally open to you guys.
Keith's very conservative. He never overestimates revenue. And that's, you know, just in my time as the superintendent and years before, that's served us very well, as we all know. That's the, that's the proper way to do it. Even the year with the mistake in the county, if Keith knew that something was fishing with that number, he didn't, he didn't, we didn't, we weren't counting on all that money and it saved our bacon.
So I just, just for reference point, I put up what it would cost to do a 3% raise, a 4% raise, a 5% raise, or a 6% raise. And you can see, like I say, every, every 1% adds $642,500 to the expenses, takes it out of fund balance. And so that's basically, I, I mentioned the 3%. If we did a 6% raise, which is what the legislature gave on the WPU, unfortunately, most of ours got eaten up by that massive health insurance premium increase. But if we did 6% and cost us almost, well, $3.8 million and we'd use $2.2 million of our fund balance and we brought it back to basically where we started this fiscal year,
We, we are going to go back and this is, this is laid out, you know, with everything on the table above.
Right.
That, that's what we're going to spend a lot of time on today is seeing where we can, you know, middle that down.
Right. So does that all make sense?
One thing we have to keep in mind, well, I know you guys do, but the health insurance is part of our, part of the package.
I try.
And we took a big hit on that this year.
I try.
It did. Where the last couple of years, you said we haven't taken anything.
Right.
So that's a discussion on that later.
And it's a, and the, the employees very much appreciate that the district pays for health insurance because fewer and fewer of the districts actually cover 100% of the premiums as we do.
We down to a handful, less than 10 maybe?
Maybe about 10 or 12.
Yeah. It's kind of been a hallmark of our district. We've had, some years we've had some real, some real back and forth discussions on, this might be the year that we, that we don't do that any longer. But, you know, let's discharge everybody 50 bucks a month or whatever it might be. It's always come back to, that's one thing we're known for, that's one thing our teachers really appreciate. And I think in our current thinking, especially in, especially in, you know, times of floons, that, that it's something we want to stick to.
And doesn't that, I mean, that entices new teachers.
Absolutely.
I was going to say, if Sean were here, he would, he would tell you that.
I mean, that's a.
That.
Teachers understand and.
Makes his job easier to go out and find new teachers.
Quality teachers.
That letter that we've sent out now, turned three times. You guys, direction where it shows them, where it shows everybody exactly, you know, pie chart, these are your benefits, this is what we're paying for insurance. You know, I think, I remember back in my days as a young teacher, you didn't really get it. You just thought it was, you know, all, yeah, benefits are great, you know, smoke and mirrors, whatever. Well, it's not smoke and mirrors, it's, it's a check. You know, it's, it's hard money written out of our accounts to these different folks to provide those, to provide those things. What, what does a, what does a health plan cost for a, for a family now?
With, with dental insurance combined, it's $20,428 or something like that a year.
It's a real expense to us. That's what we pay that, we pay that for every employee in the family.
I have no desire to touch our health insurance. To me, that's a huge benefit to every employee in this district. That that means we have a 2.4 increase. We say, hey, we got to protect this for you.
But I guess what I was, and I want, really the board will have to discuss this, but that was a big hit for the insurance this year. Biggest we've seen for a long time. I know we felt a lot of pressure last time to give the full raise of what the WPU came out at, but I don't know where it's going to go. We just have to see where it ends up. But that's. And that's something that will, you know, we, we, we can legally discuss these negotiated items in an executive session. We're hitting the high spots now, tonight, we'll have an executive session. One of the things we'll be discussing is, is those packages.
Okay. So now, on the back of your page is the detail of what makes up those numbers. The increase in property tax revenues is just based on an 8% new growth because that's how the certified rate is calculated. We get, we're guaranteed last year's revenues plus new growth. So 8% is, is pretty much what it's been averaged over the last few years. And then we have the, we have one more year of the board equalization adjustments. And so that's calculated in there as well. And so that makes up the, the additional $4,116,000 in property tax increases. As soon as I get a legislative estimate from the Board of Education, I'll, I'll do that spreadsheet and shoot it off to you so that you can see the detail of what makes up the $1,860. Because as of right now, that's just, that's just 6% more than we got this year. There's going to be new growth, so it's probably more than the $1,860. Now, the, and then the, at the bottom of the page shows the, the 2.9% increase in health insurance. Our cost this year is just over $11 million and with that, did I say, did I say 21.9?
No.
Okay.
I know you said 2.9.
I said, I thought I said 2.9. With that 21.9 increase will raise those premiums from $11 million to $13,500,000. And then that leaves basically the discussion now of the positions that we've included on this list that make up the $2,766 that it shows up on the front page as well. So that's, if you have any, anything else, any questions?
Everybody, we good? Everybody's in?
Okay. So now we'll just start at the top of that list and work our way down. And the directors are here, ready to talk about what these positions mean. So we'll go ahead and go down the list. I'll turn it over to them.
I think unless somebody's, unless somebody else would prefer, I think I'd like to talk about this version. I think this, this first one, I'm going to give you just a little bit of history and tell you what our, what our proposal is. The business of, I don't want to go too far back on history. I'll try and start somewhere after the revolution. The history of the assistant principalship and even the principalship, the duties have changed greatly in education. They used to be, in, in my first years in education and even my first years as an assistant principal at Wasatch Middle School, over at Yol' Junior High, I was Doug Hardy's assistant. I had the world by the tail and I spent all of my day, every day, working on student discipline. And that, that was it. And, and you know, principals in those days did a lot with, with managing the budget, managing the school, you know, being prepared with something good for faculty meeting and taking the phone calls and the emails as they come in and making the state happy and the district happy. And there wasn't a whole lot of, there wasn't a whole lot of instructional leadership. And that's, that's changed over the years. When I first started as a math teacher, they brought the, at some point in the year, they brought the, what we'd call the state corps into the room. And it was, I remember it was in, you guys remember the old kind of blue? Yeah, they were kind of bound in this blue. The name was a big, one of those big gold brass pins in the front that was dog-eared on the end. And I, somebody set that on my desk and I put it on the shelf and we never looked at it again. And when we took the core test, we took the core test like about 10 days before school got out. No one ever talked to me about how my kids did on it. Nobody cared. It was, it was, you know, I think it's safe to say that there was, there was some bad education in the 80s, in the 70s in public at all over this country. And that's changed dramatically. We now know exactly what we want our kids to learn. And the work of the principal has changed. There used to be a lot of workshops you could go to that the title was, you know, how to become an instructional leader instead of a manager of your building. And it's changed greatly over the years. And we're continuing with that transformation on down to our assistant principals. We just, we just hired some new assistant principals. And I'm here to tell you that they are, they are fantastic. And they're, they're fantastic educators and they're fantastic instructional leaders. And they're really good at that high-quality, high-functioning PLCs and leading those discussions. And they, you know, they grew up studying, they grew up studying DeForre. And they grew up studying all the instructional gurus. What's that guy we used to read his book day in and day out?
Marzano.
Marzano. He was our, Marzano's book was our bible for a long time for instruction. And the Atlanta Wrights and the Terry Jarvis and May and Kevin, these four assistants we just hired, they cut their teeth on that stuff. They, they started with that stuff. And that's different than what we've seen in the past. different than what we've seen in the past. And so what I'm leading up to is, we're, we had a, we had, with, with some of the extra monies that came down the pike with COVID, Rocky Mountain Middle School, actually, Tempanogus Middle School, decided that they, they had a guy over there that was kind of, had put in for some administrative jobs. And, and they wanted to free up the principal and the assistant to be more instructional leaders. And so they had set some money aside to have a teacher on special assignment or whatever, what are we calling them today?
Student support.
Student support assistants that they would handle. And it would be kind of an entry level, an entry level, get your feet wet, like an internship, so that, so that those administrators have more time to focus on making sure that our students were meeting, you know, meeting the standards for, for what we, what we need to teach them in a given year. And it's been a, it's been a real success at Tempanogus. And what we're proposing is that we extend that now to the high school and to our other middle school. And we actually have, we have three listed here, but that actually can be, can be cut back to two. Because the funding mechanism we're using for, for Tempanogus Middle is, is actually drawing funds out of the, out of the general budget. So that's already been paid for in last year's budget. So we're proposing to add an additional position at the high school and at Rocky Mountain. And we think it will really go a long ways to, as we've studied, as we've watched this year, and as, as I make my rounds and, and talk to principals about needs and wants and different things, that's been number one on, on their list at the high school and at, and at Rocky Mountain. If we could get some help to free up these new administrators that we've hired to do more than just be a disciplinarian, it would really help our, our educational goals, help us meet our educational goals. So, so this is one that I feel strongly about. I think the directors would agree. And Keith, can we, can we chop that down by a third?
Yes.
Three eighty-two, five hundred?
Yes. So instead of three, we'll change that to two. And that reduces the, the request from three eighty-two to two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Each, each FTE, based on a mid-level teacher with family benefits, is gonna cost a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred. So two positions is two fifty-five.
So does that mean you hire an additional teacher for those schools because you're taking a teacher out of the class?
Yes, it does. So.
And moving them up to kind of an assistant assistant.
We would kind of, yeah, we would, we would bring somebody off the current staff, somebody that's experienced and maybe that has already gotten their admin, admin degree and, and applied for a job or two. We have a lot of, we have a lot of certificated administrators in this district that are still teaching. A lot of folks have gone back and got their degrees and they're, they're just not, you know, we don't have room for everyone. It's very competitive. So yeah, we'd pick one of those and it would trickle them to another hire, another, another FTE in a teacher hire.
So do you pay those, pay that position, you pay those more than, more than they're getting paid now?
A little bit, but no whole lot. They do it for.
They might have a few extra days, but they would stay on the, they would stay on the same salary schedule, but just with some additional days.
Okay.
That's usually how it's done. General term would be, you know, just a teacher on special assignment. And if you're, if you're curious, I don't think it hurts to mention, Jared Henry is the guy that's doing that for us at TMS. And he's doing a great job. And I'm not getting emotional about that position. I think my allergy is from my throat. It's so scratchy. I don't know. Thank you. I'll dump some of this in my mountain bush.
So Keith, really quick, so it's a hundred and twenty-seven five, that's mid-level. So about what step and lane are we, generally?
You know, if we hired somebody that was a BS thirty-seven, step ten, that's with, with family premiums, that would, that would be about where that is. You guys have any questions about that?
I don't.
Any directors wanna weigh in on that? Or are we, are we ready to move on? We don't wanna rush any of these discussions. We've got time.
Well, just a quick question on the FTE. So if we hire somebody who's lower than that on steps and lanes, what, where does this extra money that we budgeted go, just out of curiosity?
Well, instead of eating as much into the fund balance as it is, it eats less.
So that would be towards our savings?
Yes.
And if we needed it, it's there?
Right.
What does it cost, what does it cost to hire a new teacher?
A new right out of high, out of.
Salaries fifty, fifty-three.
Fifty-three thousand this year is our starting salary. You have to add approximately, well, you have to add thirty-two percent of that to cover the cost of retirement, which is like twenty-three point six nine percent. And the four years portion of the FICA taxes, which is seven point six five percent. And then there's a little workers comp, there's unemployment, those, those other very small taxes. And that, so that's thirty-two percent of fifty-three is about fifteen thousand six hundred.
Seven in total there.
Something like that. And then, and then insurance. So.
Thirty-ninety, ninety?
So we're already to sixty-nine and then we add twenty-two, we're at ninety-one.
Also the ones right out of college aren't on the family plan. If you get one right out, they're a lot cheaper.
Yeah. If you get a BA one, that's single, it's gold.
Then you're looking at about seventy-eight.
Yeah. These, these guys wouldn't agree with me.
But then they leave in two years, right? Which are about ninety thousand for, for a new teacher if they're right on the family.
That's right.
So this number could be lower.
It could.
Yeah.
Could be.
Could be.
But we can't, but we can't count on that.
Again, we always budget in the other to make sure we're covering our bases.
And, and it's, we, we don't hire a lot of BA ones anymore. We're, we're lucky, we're, I mean, these guys will agree, we're able to go out and get some fantastic teachers from the, from the lower valleys. We've been still from Mark City, which used to be unheard of. But because of the board's efforts with the salary schedule, we're, we can, we can go out and.
Todd had, Todd had to tell me those were still slightly better than ours.
Todd, oh, Todd Hopper? We'll see. We'll see.
He said they're, yeah.
We'll see.
Sounds like a challenge. He's a good guy.
He is.
Okay. Who's gonna start on this elementary specialist? I think, was I gonna take that one as well to get us started? So the elementary specialist goes back to a request that we've had from, from our, our community band parents. They came and made a plea with the board and, and talked about adding, you know, instead of hiring a paraprofessional to teach music in our elementary schools, they, they basically requested that we hire a certified music teacher for each one of those buildings. So we, we've put that on here. I would, I would report to you that we've been having a lot of good discussions with our, with our elementary schools about this, with our principals and others. And keeping in mind that we, you know, that we are, we, it's not like there's no music going on in the schools. It's, it's there. It's just being led mostly by paraprofessionals. So as we've talked to principals and we've, we've said, you know, how do you feel about this? One message that's coming back fairly consistently is, you know, if you think of the elementary world, they, they do have, you know, they, they have kind of this, this pretty small band of what we would call as the secondary guide electives, things they can do outside of the, outside of the, you know, the literacy and the math and those type of things they're trying to accomplish. And so what we're hearing from, from principals for the most part is, yeah, that might, that, that would be helpful, but we also are considering other things as well at the community council level. And I, I specifically had a couple of principals tell me just in the past ten days that their, that their, their community councils are, are really hoping to add, increase our, our STEM offerings. And, you know, there's some, there's some elementary schools around the state that that's their focus, that they, they don't do VLI, they don't do a whole lot of anything else. And they, they're these, these really dyed-in-the-wool STEM elementary schools. And the partnership gives us access to a guide down at Reagan University that's, that's able to provide some of that. And so we've been exploring that a little bit with, with the principals. And it is driven, it is driven by our community councils, which I like. I think that's a, that's a great place for it to come from. So, so we do, we do have this voice of, you know, before we jump in with, you know, with the six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar item, let's think this through a little bit. Let's, let's give us some more time as principals to talk to our faculty, to, to talk to our, our community councils and, and see, you know, exactly where we want this to end up. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that discussion. And, and you guys wanna add anything to that? Eric or, or Garrett, do you have anything to add? So I, what, and then, and there are some different things we can do. We have to be careful. Some of this I would rather share with you in, in executive session because it would, it would, you know, maybe touching some areas that are sensitive or something. So we have some ideas to, to maybe tackle this in a, you know, and instead of just saying we're gonna run out and hire five, five new teachers to handle music. We'd like to take a little more time, a little more nuanced approach, make sure that we're, that we're not making this decision today at this table. And then going back to our schools and having, having our community councils and, and our teachers saying, what the heck, this is just, you just mandated this top down to me. We, we, we need these things considered as well. So we think we need a little more time for that discussion to take place at the school level. And we have some ideas on, on how we can maybe tackle it without, without just flat out hiring five. Is that, is that fair enough?
Makes sense.
I would say, and if we, if we wanted to, you know, I, I would, I would probably suggest that, that we think we can come up with a scenario that, that would maybe, what, cut that number in half? Maybe cut that number in half for a budget. But, but we want a little more, a little more time with it.
So you're saying we have this group, you know, like the band, the music group, but then we have community councils saying they want this?
That's correct. And so we, we kinda have to, you know, balance that between, between both. And, and we don't, you know, and if they, if the group was here, I would, I would say this in front of them, we're not, we're not, as a, as a, as a staff, as the educators here in the, in the district, we're not buying this assumption that, that adding five certificated music teachers to the elementaries will have this direct correlation and all of a sudden our, our high school music programs are, are what this music, music group of parents are teaching. We're not sure that that's the, we're not sure if you push this lever, this happens. We're just not sure that, that's a direct correlating item.
As we've talked, as we've talked to high schools at like the, for the Westlake, it's a mixed bag. We can get from their instructors. So it hasn't told us talking to those great music programs. This is a critical piece. And so that, that makes us questionable. And then I know the day I got here, there were several schools that were like, well, we can run a STEM route. I think that got stifled a little bit going through COVID because we really, specials were not going. But I, it's really ramping back up again right now based off the fact they're gonna have their community council probably a couple of years ago. Where that is something they're gonna really try to work through. So it's just kicking out.
What do you mean by a STEM route? Explain that.
Well, so in, in your special time, you've got PE, you've got possibility for music, you've got possibility for drama, kind of that a little elective.
Yeah.
They want us, they're a STEM.
So basically technology.
So, so this guy from BYU who's done this in some of the schools, I think this is what some of them envision, is he helps them come up with some great STEM activities tied to the core. And then they do those during those special times to, and they're to really activity-based type of things.
So give the board some examples of some of the STEM things that we're doing already.
So some of the things we're doing already is we have the little bots. We're teaching kids how to, to code along with our iPads. That's been a big push as we've gone around. In fact, we just went to a, a school in Davis School District that's, that's using one of their specials as STEM this last week. And those are the type of things that their communities are pushing for is the coding, how to use the, you know, use their iPads more creative, creative ways, those type of things that they're, they're kind of working on. There's also the engineering, which is also a huge, big thing. Teaching kids how to really, like, we just had, I just came back this morning, our middle school kids were in a, a robot competition in the, in those water. They're competing against all the partnership districts down in Alpine at the high end. So it's a lot of building those skills that those kids can do to, to kind of reach the, those levels in the middle school. Right now, it's just our honors classes doing it. But, you know, the goal would be and the thought is the more we can teach those kids at the elementary school, then, then every class is an honors class. How that, how that the middle school, that way is really just engineering and science and technology.
And then at the same time, we're being flooded with emails on the music.
Yeah.
The music groups. I keep saying, hey, go talk to Todd.
Sorry.
So some of them are coming to board meetings.
Are they?
And with the elementary specialists that we currently have, the paras that we currently have teaching music, the legislature passed the Grow Your Own Teachers, are there funds that we can use there to help some of those paras that maybe they're paras now?
Absolutely.
So that maybe we're not necessarily, like, we're still supporting the music program and maybe looking what we can do there? Is that, is that up for discussion?
Yeah. So that, that would be another creative way that we could do that. As they're working through some paras, we can help them get their certification in the elementary area. The other thing going by the pause, David, about that, as we talked with our neighboring districts and especially the, the five that we work with, with BYU partnership, that, that is the way they go, that each school decides what those specials are based on what the desires of the communities are. And that, that was one thing that rang true across all of them, that by being our principals and those teachers are closer to what those desires are in that community. And they feel like they're better able to provide for that community.
So STEM, I think, stands for science, technology.
Engineering.
Engineering and math. So it's, and, you know, sometimes people throw an A in there and call it STEAM. But, but there's definitely, we have a lot of folks in our valley now that work in that area and are interested in having more of that in elementary schools. And so we, we're just trying to think big picture as we, as we, as we do more with music, we wanna, we don't wanna just go in and, you know, throw a two-pound jackhammer at it. We wanna be, we wanna be thoughtful and scientific about how we do this. Because we have been hearing, I, I know the community councils at Old Mill and Midway specifically have been talking about this for some time.
Yep. Those are the two that definitely, they want, like, we wanna run this route.
So I don't know if we wanna, if we wanna put a number to that or if we wanna kind of leave that unopened. I, I would say we at least, we at least kind of cut it in half. I think there's ways we can.
Well, I would just say too, just, just, we don't see this as music or STEM, you know? We don't see that, that at all. I mean, it would just be, it would be in addition to the, to our efforts to, you know, to work with the music folks and to make sure we're providing good instruction there. It's not a, it's not an either or. This is all part of how we help teachers at elementary schools get prep time. And we enrich these kids' experience in, in these areas based on these specials.
We, we have added a lot to, and I appreciate that clarification from Jason. We, we have added a lot to our elementary schools. We've been, we've been the leaders of, in the state of, of, you know. We've been, we've been the leaders of, in the state of, of, you know, we have PE teachers, certified PE teachers in our elementary school. That goes back to Tyler's dad. That was an important thing for him as a board member is to make sure kids were being healthy and getting outside and doing these activities. And we have, we have certified librarians in all of our elementary schools. And so we've added these, there's, I think there's one more. We have counselors in all of our elementary schools. Those, none of those, none of those positions existed in a typical elementary school. We were one of the first districts to do all three of those as we did them. And it certainly wasn't the same year. It's been a little time, but.
What, what is their worry, the music people? They seem to feel like things are going to be removed. Isn't that the sense you get from the emails is that they're feeling like some coursework is going to be taken away? What, what is the, what's the gripe with these folks?
Well, I think, I think it mostly centers around the people that are running those elementary programs. And some of them are, I think we have some after-school programs and some that are, that are part of the day, that they're being ran by paraprofessionals. And I think there's a little bit of a push going on as, as this group's putting pressure maybe on some of our high school teachers and, and secondary teachers. They're, you know, it, it just, that's one, that's an easy thing for them to identify and say, well, you know, you know, you have, you have these laypeople and they're teaching the elementary kids music. And so, but as, as Garrett said, we've done our, our research and there's at least one high school with one of the best band programs in the state that says we've, that's not, that's not how we do it. And in fact, we would rather the kids come to us without having been given bad instruction in elementary school. And I mean, that's what they said, rather than that's the new.
Isn't that the sense you get kind of from emails you get from the people or?
The sense I get is they just want it from the bottom.
Bottom line.
Let's start young so that by the time they do get to high school, that they have a, a good solid base in the music program. But I don't, I mean, it's just, I think everybody has different interests.
Well, same way, same way with Little League baseball. We're trying to build it from the ground up this season.
I just, you know, I feel like the music world is so different from the STEM world and they,
that they're both probably important for each kid because each kid has a different path. So it's like, we got to try and provide each path.
Yeah. And everybody has their own story, like the music people, you know, they have their stories of success. But then STEM people or any other group have their success stories, so.
We would hate to, you know, we would hate, especially the first year or two, that the, that the student steps into our system. We would hate to pigeonhole, pigeonhole them in one or the other. We want them to have a wider ride. And that's more along maybe the paraprofessional ideation there that, that, you know, we're, we're going to do some music activities with, with elementary kids and it's, and it's okay.
Well, how do you do without paraprofessionals? I mean, not, not using the music teacher.
Send this, you know, a certified music teacher in there. But with that, we got to balance, well, if we send, if we sent one certified music teacher to every elementary school, does that even warrant, would that then take away from some of these other things?
Do you have a certified music person to go in?
Well, no, they, no, their proposal is that we hire them, that we hire them. But I, I don't know if they're out there either.
Right.
I really don't know.
Definitely is that the reasons kids make choices in programs are complicated. They're nuanced enough that it's really difficult to say, to point to a reason and then like Paul's, I mean, his pulse point earlier, you know, and say, well, therefore if we did this, then it's going to, it's going to result in that. It's just not that simple. It has everything to do with the, the scope of what we're offering. Not, not to mention kids' individual preferences, but also then the quality of our existing programs. There are also things that factor in significantly into what kids ultimately end up pursuing in elective course options.
Music's one of those that does have a place in our curriculum, like, like Tyler talked about baseball. We don't teach baseball to elementary kids either. It's not, but we do have school.
It's all, yeah, paraprofessionals, right?
And we, we want music to be, we think music and foreign language and there's, there's some key components there that we know extrapolate out and, and enhance the learning process across the board. And we know music's one of them. So we're not, we're not downplaying that at all. We're just trying to be, we're just trying to be wise about this and not, you know, you know. When I, when I talked face-to-face with a couple of principals, I, I was, it became very apparent to me, man, I'm glad we didn't, not that we ever were going to, I'm glad we didn't just, we just didn't come over here and tell this principal that we were hiring a full FTE music teacher. Because they would have said, oh, hey, you know, we've been having these discussions in community council and we got to be careful here. So Keith, I don't know. I think we, I think we, even if we just put, for now, if we.
Let's just cut that in half. Is that fair enough, gentlemen?
Yeah, can they rotate around to this?
We're doing that now with their retailer sourcing, what they have on, on the grant that we got.
We have three FTE that are paid with the Beverly Taylor Sourcing Grant money.
One visual art and two music.
So.
At least we'll be, we have two certified music FTE right now.
Right.
So I, I think the message for the board, back to some of these folks that are emailing you, and our message to them will be, we're working on this. Give us a little more time. We're working on, you know, but we're working on a holistic approach, not just, not just music. We're having these conversations. We're going to give some local control to the community council and we'll come up with something that we think will, will at least, you know, give those kids a chance to develop their music skills and vary their knowledge.
So just to clarify, so we have two certified FTE right now on music. So we have those two. This would be in addition to those two.
That's right. They're not totally music. They're, they're arts as well.
Yeah, one is visual arts.
Yeah, and then two.
And then two music.
Yeah, so two are straight music ones. Okay.
So like my daughter would get a music experience, she would say, yeah, the BTS person came in today.
Yeah.
And then we're going to have paraprofessionals to every school as well?
And we do have paraprofessionals that help out when they can get a, a paraprofessional that has that music ability. And when they don't, then they, they'll do maybe visual arts instead or.
Or drama.
Or dance.
You guys have been talking directly with the parent group. Are they aware that we have those two full-time already?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're aware, for sure. They're open to add two. So teachers didn't have to rotate through.
Okay. Well, because, yeah. Well, I'm just thinking if we have two and we're going to add five, we don't have seven elementaries.
It just seems to me that the music people are paranoid that something's going to change, it seems like.
I mean, I get what they're going for. They want one at each school. I get that. But even five is too many for what we currently have. If we currently have two, then most we would add is three.
And, yeah, and originally when they came to art, that's why we mentioned that should be specialist. They're talking about arts. So that way they were, each school would have one full-time arts person is how we originally, I was brought up originally with, when my group came.
But then what we're hearing feedback on is don't forget that STEM route.
Yeah.
We're wanting to go on a couple of years ago. We're coming out of COVID. Those talks are kicking out.
And, and like I said, what we found from other districts is different. Communities have different lots of desires. I mean, some are just doing keyboarding skills. I can't imagine someone doing that. But some, some are doing.
Was that directed at you or?
Anyway, but there's, there's different desires and wants from different communities and that's how they've done it.
Why don't you just put two FTE in there?
I think he's cutting it down to three, right?
So you're cutting it to three or even?
I think we're going to, I think we're just going to put two, two FTE on that.
So it'd be the same as the first line as well?
Pretty much, yeah. She is fine. All right.
Two.
It's a good discussion. All right. What do we have next? Eric, you going to talk about this?
So we already talked, and, and sorry, kind of mentioned that the state has a Grow Your Own Grant that is out there. We've been in communication with the Center for the Schools of the Future through Utah State. And a lot of districts are in a position of, because of teacher shortages, because it's difficult to get teachers into the field. In our particular area, what we've heard from others in areas where, you know, the pricing of housing is, is higher, it's more helpful to, to grow teachers from your own community. One way to do that is through this Grow Your Own program. What the administrators in this program have done, the school districts that have jumped into this, the administrator builds that relationship with the colleges to bring those professors here to the school district to make it easier for our community members that are trying to get their bachelor's in teaching to be able to do that. So that would be a lot of the coordination. There's also a lot to do with the scholarship programs, fundraising, those type of things that would allow people that can't afford it to be able to come through. We just, again, we're talking with Davis just this week because they have two, and they call them Teacher Academy Schools. We like that name. But one of the big areas that they're trying to do is trying to get their, their Hispanic populations in the area to, to come through because a lot of them would like to teach, but never felt like they had the funds or the means to be able to go to college. What they're focusing on, not focusing, but one of the areas that they're branching out to is talking to their Latinos in Action classes and those type of things. And how many kids know if you have a desire to go to college and teaching is, and what we learned from Garrett, because that's how Latinos in Action or LIA started, was actually a teaching focus. How do we get more of our Hispanic community into the teaching profession? And so as, this would just be an extension of that. And any other kids, we currently have, I think, 20 plus kids in our TAPS program. Is that right, Jason?
In our third-year one?
Oh, or.
There's about, there's about 75 total, well, 20 probably in our.
That last one. So these are kids we already know in our high school that are interested in teaching. So if we can capitalize on that and find ways to help our current students to, to come through and become teachers. So essentially we're kind of coordinating and setting up those avenues for, for people to be able to do that.
So for the cost on that, I, I made a note there that we're looking at a $50,000 state grant and I think that's for three years. So netting that out, it leaves $160,100 that would be requested in the budget.
Well, we'd basically be patterning, patterning that program after, after this program we're looking at at Davis. It's also being administered with some help from the future schools, folks up at Utah State. And I like it. I think it's a great thing. It does fit with the, with the program Jason has going in caps. One way to find teachers that can afford to live here is if we're tapping into our own families and our own kids that, you know, maybe grandma has a house or a basement they can live in or mom and dad have an extra loft that's ready to be built on or what, or whatever. It helps, it helps us grow, grow our own teachers that can find a way to, to live here, which is going to become a bigger, bigger and bigger challenge for us.
As we've gone up to Davis and, and talking with Reed yesterday, Super Ten, two days ago? What's today? But that, that person is the lifeblood. It's basically, don't, don't do it. You don't have that person. There's just too much work. And also relationships with the, the, the students. They're going to bring that up a whole lot. And it's very difficult. The administrative board has a partnering back and forth with the university. But so you have to have a, a good person that's capable of that really. And you watch when you go up there, that person is the lifeblood. Like you can tell that that's the case. That's a critical person.
What university are they?
State, Western Governors and, and Utah State.
Who would we do our?
Well, we could, where we're at, we could be positioned, not as BYU and UBU are, are obvious ones, but Western Governors is also one. SUU, there's a lot of different universities that we could have partnerships.
We've been told about the School for the Future, the Western Governors, really easy to work with because it really doesn't matter where they're getting their, their.
So we still, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's what they're doing there is bringing in the resources from all these universities, whether it be students, professors, those type of things to, to make this work. So that we're in a great position, I think, to have multiple partnerships to really create this and make it our own and make it what we want it to be with the best of the best, any of those universities.
What the university does, they also do is they, they bring their people up and they're kind of, they're pre-student teaching type of teachers. And so you get a lot of people, those people in your schools, in your valley. It really gives you a, a leg up on. It's just like they've got so many university kids that want to stay at those two schools. This is like, now they can't keep them all. So they're definitely in a mindset of, also for, for other districts. But if you get them into school and get them used to it back, they get those relationships built. Recruiting becomes way easier. So it's been a big help with that, I think.
Okay, any, any thoughts, one way or another? Is this something the board generally supportive of, this point? Okay, who's going to talk about the girls wrestling?
I got it. So we've talked about this little girls wrestling is something that is state sanctioned at this point. So a lot of programs don't have a program. I would say it's a growing sport at the state at this point. So there's a desire, we're small groups at the high schools to bring the wrestling program on for the girls. I don't, it's like to go way down, probably too far of a stretch and have to do that. As, as we've talked back and forth with the high school, I, I, I think definitely for now, there's a feeling that, that we can get this up going through current staff or paraprofessional or something like that. So I'm going to say we do a table this one for a little bit on this one because I continue to discuss those put on at first. But probably the last week or so, I was saying things, a little bit on that. So I'd say let's, let's, let's rely on just finding current staff that can possibly take that. Or I don't think we need an FTE. Or let's try with the state. Right now, still, I think that's the thing that we can do.
Okay, how many, so, sorry. How many do you feel like are going to participate? How big will that be?
Let me speak to that a little bit, Tyler. That's a good question. I'll just give you a little, little history. So the, the High School Activities Association is, is currently under litigation from a group that has sued them because we don't offer girls tackle for the golf. And there's some major high schools along the Wasatch Front that are listed specifically in that lawsuit. That's in process. So at the same time, High School Activities has looked very closely at making sure they're in compliance with, with some of the Title IX standards. And they're working with, you know, they're working with the, with the federal government on that. And so they made a big push recently to add some girls' sports. And they added, they added girls' wrestling and they added, they sanctioned cheerleader as a, cheerleading as a sport. It used to be just an activity, even though a lot of cheer teams were competing already. Now it's an official sport as well. So those two girls' sports were added. I think two years ago, this year was our second sanctioned girls' state wrestling tournament. It took place in the same, you know, in the, in the same gym as the, as the boys did. The first year, there were 500 girls that participated in girls' wrestling. Year two, there was 1,000. And they're, they're anticipating that's going to, that's either going to raise somewhere between 500 and 1,000 again by next year. It's really popular all over the country.
Well, I know the wrestling world is, that, that's the frontier, getting, getting girls involved. And this, this is, this is huge for the future of the sport. And this, this is, this is huge for the future of the sport, right?
How many do we have?
We don't have any, and people cannot understand that. Little Wasatch, we don't have a girls' wrestling program. We're one of the last to add it. So we, we've talked about it a time or two, and there just, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a family or families really pushing it in, in our district, or we probably would have it. But we, we feel like it's, it's time to add it.
Do you think we have enough of an interest?
It'll grow slowly. It'll grow slowly here, I think. I mean, we, the, the exerts of our, of our boys' program, you know, will, could both be a help and a hindrance, I think, in that, in some regard. But I think it'll, I think we'll grow slowly, because we don't have a ton in our younger kids. But as we offer it, like Mr., like Superintendent says, it'll, it'll, it'll start to grow. We need, we need, we need to have it, and not be, not needing to use an FTE for it. We thought we were going to have to do that to hire the right type of person. But we've kind of found some, some folks that we think might, might work. And so then it's a relatively, we're just paying the stipends for the coaching staff.
It's almost a non-factor at this point. But then eventually you see it trickle down to like the Little Wasp girls' program?
Well, we have, we offer, we have girls in Little Wasp. Not that many, but we, that's, that's, that any boys or girls can participate in that year.
It's not too bad at that age. Once, once you get to junior high and especially high school, you know, this wrestling parent from experience is really happy that, you know, that your boy doesn't have to wrestle a girl, because it's a, it's a really emotional, tough thing for a boy to do.
Lose, lose, you're on the way.
I think, you asked the question, how many too? Like, I've known a few people that have started up the program, and if they get the right person that draws the girls in, that the girls can relate to, then it's just like any elect, I mean, that's their free time. So they're going to want to be where they can be. It's the same thing when we're talking about electors, kids sign up, they feel good, they enjoy the adult. It's more about relationships, even like...
Doesn't matter what it is.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's what's going to be key to this.
And while we're talking about high school activities, this morning at about 10:30,
yes.
the vote was taken. I was at the meeting, 10 to 4, but the Board of Trustees voted in favor of volleyball. So Duke was there with some of his people from around the state. And he had a, he had a handout, and he read every word of your resolution, Wasatch County School Board. And he had a picture in the handout that all the members of the BOT had in front of them that showed volleyball team gathered around this table with the board. So you, you're...
That's awesome. Awesome. Congrats.
It was, Wasatch County School Board was very well represented.
When, when is their season?
So their season is in the spring, and it's not for two years. So they'll continue to play like they are, but, but, but it's, it's for the spring of 2024 is when they'll actually be a full-on sanctioned sport. And, you know, Duke had a couple of representatives there from legislature. He had, I mean, he's done his, he's done his homework, and he, he played about like he did here. They gave him five minutes and he took 20. Yeah, he, but he's, you know, this will be kind of part of Duke's legacy.
So happy for him.
He's left us behind, so...
He's a great guy. He deserves...
Is he going to stick around and be the coach?
Um, I, I think he will. I think Duke's going to stick around for a while. He's, he's getting to, he's certainly in the, I shouldn't speak for him, but I think in the sunset of his 30 years as an educator, I believe he's passed that threshold, so who knows?
He, he has. He told me that last night.
All right, what do we got next? So we're, we reduced that down to just a stipend. Custodian at the district office.
You said you wanted to take that.
Why did I say that?
It's an easy one.
So with the retirement of Gary Walton, we've really not had, we've not, we've really not replaced that as yet. We've been kind of filling in with different custodians that come over for an hour or two. It's, it's not the best configuration, but it's been working, and we're, we're, you know, regret, we're happy to take home fifteen. But we're proposing a, a half FTE so that somebody can be assigned at least half time in this, in this building. Is that, is that how you understand?
The discussion with Sean was that we, he thought we could postpone and get...
Oh, was it? I didn't know that's where it ended up.
Yeah, we, we thought we could get away with what we're doing now for another year at least.
All right, I'll scratch that one.
They're laughing out.
That makes Cory happy. Scratch that sucker off.
Hey, I don't doubt we won't spend it somewhere.
Cory.
We need to spend it. This is where we're going to spend it.
We can go on the fund balance.
Well, we don't have to put it all in the fund balance.
All right, next we have the Wasatch High School Health Day. I know I wasn't going to talk about that.
I think you were. No, no, no. I can talk to you about this here. This is another one that was put on as a, as a, as a, from, by, by our nurses, but we believe that we can, we can wait for another year on. They have, they have, I think, two health days there now.
So it's additional health day, not, not a one.
We have one that I've accounted.
Yeah, there's one everybody, but there's two at the high school. And after further conversations with them, we think we can wait on that position as well.
There was also, there was also the idea that we really ramped up there, and let's see what happens after COVID. After it all realizes, let's see what works.
You guys setting us up here, you know, you kind of put all this, put all this stuff on here, and we should cross it off?
So the health days that are there now, are they half FTE or are they full? Full, yeah. Of FTE, they're not classified? Or they are classified, yeah. That's what I was wondering.
Did you get that crossed on?
I'm crossing it off.
Put your pen away for a minute now.
Yeah, I'm assuming this next one's not going to be crossed on.
So next we have an accounting position. I'm going to, I'm going to speak for a minute. Just hold me to a minute, Keith. And then Keith's going to talk about it. Keith's title is the Business Administrator. And I've, I've arm wrestled with Keith a little over the years, because Keith's a do-it-yourself kind of guy, which we, we love him for that. But we continue to ask Keith to be more involved in our district meetings, to be more involved in actually, instead of, instead of doing all the number crunching himself in the office, to be more of an administrator of these financial programs all throughout the district, and, and have someone else that's kind of behind the door doing a lot of the number crunching. If you compare our district to other districts, and this is solely because of Keith's who he is, and I, I say that with admiration, we hardly have an accounting staff here. We have Keith, and we have, we have John Devanish that, that helps with some of those things. Other districts may have as many as, as five or six people in their accounting department. We would like to, we would like to add an accountant and free Keith up as our, our district has grown from probably in the last seven or eight years. I mean, if you think of how much different our budget is today as it was then, the number of people and employees and, and all the different things that go with it, we're, we're asking for an accountant to be hired to work here in the, in the Business Administrator's office under the Business Administrator. Go ahead, Keith.
Why is that a no-brainer?
Stacy scratched that off.
Why is that, why is that even questioned?
He's put it on a couple of times, Tyler, and then as soon as we, as soon as crunch time comes, he hurries and scratches it off. I'm asking this. I can, I can do this.
There's some things that, that aren't being done 100% adequately. Purchasing being one. So much of my time is spent doing state reports. And, and, you know, and so I'm, I'm in there crunching numbers, as Paul says. And everybody else is in Paul's room having this big discussion that I should be a part of.
So why isn't this a no-brainer?
Well, maybe it's time.
Don't scratch it, Cory.
No, I want to ask a question, but I don't know if it's the right question.
Ask whatever you'd like.
So it's a, it's a, it's higher than, than the others, it's, it's a year-round position, is why it's higher?
That's not what I was...
Okay, all right.
I don't know why all of a sudden...
Trying to preempt your question.
Here's the budget lizer right here.
For the intention of the whole group of us. I get frustrated when I leave the bank and I shut the lights off, and I walk in the next day and they're all on upstairs. And the guy's like, who cares? It's just, like, pisses me off. When I walk in, the lights are on, so it's costing so much. So I'll ask this later. I don't know. I won't ask it.
Ask it now.
No, I'm not.
We have a second discussion.
You can't drop that. I'll do it there.
We have a second discussion. Later.
Okay, I'm in favor of it.
All right.
Yeah, I can tell you this next one.
That's how they talked about this one.
So as part of the, the needs list that we received is, though this is a, you don't have to scratch this one because it's already a zero, but it was, yeah, don't scratch zero when you have it on there. But as part of the COVID and with Title I and the federal funds, one of the main impetuses of those additional funds that we received was to make sure that we have those kids that do not have the same resources as other families, to make sure they're getting them. So part of the additions that will certainly reflect on the, on the number of teachers that we have in FTEs. So you'll see that, that's why it's listed here. But it will be paid for out of federal funds that we have for another year. And the Title Fund, Title I funds we receive each year, that would be coming out of that. Though this is a one-year, we believe we can help these kids get up to experience next year to help overcome those COVID effects, so.
So, so there is a cost. I mean, there is a cost of two FTE, but, but it's covered by one-time federal revenues. And that's why it's, it's a zero.
So after federal funds end, we'll have to come up with the two FTE costs? Or is this an ongoing? This is the Title I one?
Right, the teachers that, either if we pull them from our current ranks, which would be ideal, because we know their skill set, the teachers that replace them would be on one-year hires.
I'm in favor of that.
Say, all right.
And you should know, you know, that, that we, we really don't just throw stuff up there that we can scratch off. I mean, as you're responsible for the taxpayers, the community, we think you should be part of these discussions. And, you know, we do have some discussions previous about how, but these were all legitimate things that were brought up there. And, and we value, you know, your input, as you have to answer questions from the taxpayers about how we're spending.
And those two positions will show up on, on the budget.
You're up now. This next one, if Sean were here, he'd say that it's been several years since we increased the, the rate of pay for our substitutes that we pay through Kelly Services. I don't think it's been that long, but he does. And so getting a sub has been harder and harder. There aren't a lot of local people, and it's, you know, it doesn't make sense to drive up the canyon right now to be a substitute teacher for a day. And so this, this would raise, I think that, I wish I knew right off the top of my head, I think they're being paid $85 a day, possibly to, to be a sub. If they're certificated, they get a little bit more. This would just be like a, like another $5 to $10 a day, just to try to get more people involved.
What's the going rate around the state?
That's about, that's about what the going rate is. But everybody is struggling to find substitutes.
Yeah.
I have a question. This is just thinking out of the box. Is there, with the Grow Your Own program, can that help with the substitute?
Not, not, not really. I mean, I mean, obviously indirectly, yeah, there'll be a day or two, but not, not systematically. Because those kids need to be learning and taking the coursework and getting the experiences that they need to be able to pass those classes, and that's really what that Grow Your Own is doing. So they will be in the schools, they'll be helping out, there's more adults in the schools. But they, they're not licensed or in a position to take over a, a class at that point. Yeah, so, but certainly it could help, but not, not systematically.
The, the increase, this, this past three or four months since the board increased the pay for our own people to be subs for our own teachers, has been a lifesaver. If you talk to any of the principals, they would, they would thank you for, for that, because it's, it's made it a lot easier to get people to cover for each other. So that's been a great thing. But that can't go on. We're, we're using the federal ESSR monies to, to help with that. That, that can't go on and on and on.
How long, how long will that?
Well, we originally planned to finish this year with that.
How much would it cost us to continue that, at that rate that we bumped it? Do we know? Can we, or can we look at it?
I think we do a study on that.
Yeah.
You know, what is $75,000 off? What is that?
That's just to raise them from 85 to 95.
Okay.
Because we're, we're paying, we're paying right around half a million dollars a year on subs. And this is just a...
That would be for, that would be for the...
For a year.
Coming in for the day-long subs, not for the teachers that are not their proud.
From the service that we...
We may be able to get that ESSR money, because we have one more year. I think, I think the principals have enjoyed that option a lot. I think we have ESSR money, and I think we'll be able to afford it.
Because that's one thing I have heard from teachers, is that helped them, it changed their mentality of, oh wait, they do realize what I'm giving out.
That's right.
They do realize my time is valuable to me, to teach my classes.
I think we could do that one more year through ESSR money that we would have to probably consider on the budget.
Yeah.
So, are we ready for the next one?
Are you?
Yeah.
Are we good with that?
We're good. I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good. Cory's like...
Hey, I'm not.
Cory? We'll get the nitty-gritty of what that really means. I mean, this is, like you said, round one, so, I mean, just next time if we have the nitty-gritty on where we're at, where it'll put us.
So a couple of years ago, well, maybe more than that, four or five years ago, we lost some counseling preparation programs in the state. University of Phoenix did a lot of, produced a lot of counselors, and they, they went away. And so it really left us only a couple. Utah State had a counselor preparation program. And, and that was about, there were some of their online ones that people were using. We went to UBU and asked them if they would consider a counselor program, which they responded to and started. This coming school year, we'll have our first round of interns who are ready from UBU's program. We would like to be in a position where we can offer a counseling internship each year to one of their interns. Some years, we won't have any applicants and won't use it, and some years we might. But I would like, I would like to be able to, in support of their program, offer an internship with them. We would provide that intern with an experience likely at, at our high school and our middle, and have kind of a varied experience for them. It gives us a chance to see how much we like them. This would be a full-time, it's like a teaching intern that worked full-time for half-pay and full benefits. And would let us kind of get a, get in the door on, on getting some of those into our district, and also support them in their program. And so like I said, this wouldn't be an, an every-year expense, but we'd like to be able to offer one to somebody every year. And then just kind of give them, put them in our secondary schools mostly, depending on where their kind of career goals are and where our needs are, where we need to kind of have a little extra help in our, in our counseling programs.
So they're getting a board and a first-year teacher. Okay, right, this is for the $74,000. This is for...
No, that's benefits insurance and taxes.
Yeah.
Oh, that's included, oh.
They only get half-paid.
Half, half-paid, full benefit.
Gotcha, okay. I get it.
We've never had counseling interns, we've never had, you know, social work interns or things like that. We've, we've, we've had a few interns here or there, social workers, but we just ask them to, they've just done it for nothing. And so this would be a different, a different thing for us. But, but we feel like as we get larger, with the, with the benefit from us, it will also be, it would also with it, we'd be able to kind of put off some of our growth positions maybe for another year as well, as, as we continue to grow. But we'd like, we'd like to have that position. You have any questions about that?
So I have special education.
Where does Claire fit in all this?
Okay. So.
This proxy of Claire.
He's okay with it.
All right.
This is certainly not my specialty, but I have spoken with Claire about all of these requests. And Claire is at her state conferences in St. George's this week. And nobody works harder than Claire, and she's done a lot of great things for special ed and has these requests.
I gotta, I'm gonna do this when she's here at some point, but I, and I'll read it to you, but we got a, a card from the, from the state special ed director and just crazy Claire, I don't know, it's how she's, her attention to detail, and she's a workaholic. She's just, she's been really good to, to really get us in compliance with the state and, and make sure that we're doing everything the way we're supposed to as it, as it relates to some of the state and federal guidelines. And so she's, she's doing a phenomenal job in her first year as special ed director.
So the first request is an additional teacher for our visually impaired students. And there's not a lot more to say about that, it's just to meet the demands of the number of visually impaired students that we have in the district. The second request is for the, our special education teacher at the transition college to go from part-time to full-time, so that's point-five FTE.
So she's, she's already, she's already half-time and Claire would like to bump her to full-time.
Correct. Claire did show up to the budget meeting with the bump.
Yeah, you can see she was.
Broke Eric Campbell's record.
She was very involved. Jason still holds the record, I think.
What was it, Jason?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is moving, is, is again the addition of a half-FTE at Old Mill Elementary for a speech and language pathologist. So currently there's a half-time SLP at Old Mill, and the request is to move that to full-time. In addition to that, she would also like to move the SLT, speech and language technician to full-time. So Old Mill Elementary, SLP and SLT increased by a half each, so both of those would be full-time positions.
Why, why just Old Mill?
I.
I can speak to the, the growth at that school, just the number of kids, and there's, there's just been a increase of, of those kids. And it's kind of interesting as you see kind of the growth that certain areas have a bubble of, of certain needs, whether it be speech or, or bigger values are one that has the, our, our learning lab students, it just, just depends on the community. But right now that one is particularly growing. I'm the speech kids.
It's, it's Old Mill right now, but if all of a sudden you bubble up in another school, you'd probably.
You just move.
Over.
That's right. So it's district.
So it's an elementary.
That's where.
Yeah.
That would be better. Okay. Because you moved the speech people kind of.
What's my need?
Because that's what I was wondering, so how many SLPs and SLTs do we currently actually have in the district on the elementary level? Do we know?
Some schools have two.
That's fine, I, we had some.
Old Mill might have one and a half right now.
Okay.
And they want to get to two.
But every school.
Oh, yes.
Had the full-time.
Oh, yeah.
At least at a minimum, that's what I.
It's, it's up now.
Hold a sister woman out of retirement.
Yes, we miscarried.
She was great.
She was an author.
She's helping Josh out, a total supporter.
So Keith thinks that first-year teachers are gold, these people are gold.
These, these people are gold.
They're hard to find.
They are gold.
And they are just so valuable.
Special ed teachers and, and speech cannot, you can't overestimate their impact.
So the requests are based on the number of the students in need. And then the last request is, last year, a board-certified behavior analyst was approved and hired. And the way that program would operate at its fullest would be that the BCBA would have registered behavior therapists that were working with her. And so the request is for two RBTs to go with the BCBA that is already funded and hired.
It's a lot lighter.
A lot lighter, a lot lighter. You got to tell us what they'll need.
Yeah.
Board-certified behavior analyst, registered behavioral therapist.
It's like being in the military with these guys.
Especially special education, they use more acronyms.
It's in a Grisham book or whatever, who wrote it.
So as a group, you all use a lot of acronyms. It wasn't just him, it's with you.
Education in general.
We need it.
I had, I had, one of your teachers gave me, she'd put together a list of everything involving education according to acronym. It was like two-page, two-page deal.
It is.
What's the difference in job description between the, well, I mean, I kind of know, but the SLE and the SLT?
So the main difference is an SLP can write an IEP, which is an individualized educational plan.
Kind of like a PA and an MA, right?
Yeah, the technician.
So that we can.
One has a bachelor's degree, one has a master's degree.
Yeah, why are they the same salary?
That's what I wondered.
Okay.
What you're gonna ask?
You ask it all.
Truth be told, the, the SLP is probably underestimated, and the SLT might be overestimated. Because I say, as I say, the SLT is a bachelor's degree as a, as a rule, and the SLP has a master's.
So what's the rest of, you think about Claire's requests here? Go ahead, direct.
I was just gonna say, what do you, what do you start a speech person in?
It, it depends on, on their degrees and experience.
So say they're master, they're a master's trained speech.
Yes, yeah. Then they're, then they're on the master's lane.
They're a master.
Rather than the BA lane.
There has been some talk over the years of putting them on their own, all these, what, what do we call these? What's the name we use for these support services?
Support, that is.
Preserves. They, they would like their own, they would like their own salary chart. So far, we've kind of found places to put them on our existing charts, but there's definitely a back and forth there with, with, you know, they, they kind of believe that they should be paid better than a teacher and, and we go back to, you know, the ones that do come to work for us, there's some, there's some benefit to working with us, and that's, you know, they have the same calendar as their children. So there are some benefits there beyond the salary, and that's why they work here. So we, we try and balance that, we don't disagree with them, that they're, that they're valuable, but, you know, so are our teachers, so is everybody that works in this district, and, and so, so far, we've just left them, you know, finding a spot for them on, on the other salary schedules. But it might be that one, one year, we may want to create their own schedule for them.
And I think a lot of that's probably going to be, if it's supply and demand, and if all of a sudden, it depends on other districts doing all of a sudden, they're getting priced out of the market, we're gonna have to make an adjustment on the market, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, if we already have them here, we're trying to keep them here.
Right. Well, it's so hard to find. Right.
And so I think when you listen to them, they're not seeing a more important future, they're just saying supply and demand.
Well, there's, there's nothing.
That's correct.
Well, and so, the opportunity just to improve that salary by a half and make them full-time employees where they're hard to hire in the first place seems easy.
Now, didn't Claire typically adjust her funds for the SLT?
She did. So, that's one thing.
So that's a, that's a one-year.
So on the SLT, the cost of that will be basically zero, like the Title I interventionist, because we'll use some, some one-time fed revenues to do that.
So that's a fund for.
So over on the other column over there, Stacy, just put a, go ahead and copy that over, and then put a zero-dollar value because it's, it's an N and L kind of thing. For now, yeah, I like.
Well, speaking of the, as Kurt and I talked about the visually impaired teacher, we've had one open actually for three years talking about difficult ones to find. So as, as we talked, and Kurt, if I'm wrong on this one, but the biggest need that we have for her are people that know how to do braille, because we have a number of students that, that need braille. That, right now, our biggest priority, yes, it would be great to have a visually impaired teacher, but we, but they're almost impossible to find. And, and even as we go to the state, we used to be able to, to refer to the school of, of deaf and blind, and even, we can't get as much help from them anymore because they're also struggling in the same thing. But in particular on this one, instead of being, finding a teacher that way, our biggest need is to have people that can do braille, but that is not a full certified position, we, we might be able to find a better option of finding a certified person that knows systems on braille. So this is taking the, the resources and materials and, and making them into braille for our students to be able to do that and then do it. I'm not sure if they also do a little bit of teaching for students that are learning also, but.
So I think what the, the ask would be, if we can find a visually impaired person.
Great.
But couldn't.
Sorry, we're not letting it.
But it might not happen.
You guys got enough?
We do. And then, but if not, can we use that one if it's something that needs to grow?
Would you be much less.
I say we get it, we get it.
For sure. But again, I believe that one opened for.
Yeah.
A couple of years.
If you have the braille, it's about fifty thousand.
That pay?
What was that?
If it's been open for three years.
I, I, two or three, yeah.
Do we need to bump that pay realistically?
Right now, even the state is, I, I, they're just not.
Just scarcity.
There's scarcity in general, I don't know.
So we're in scarcity.
I don't know how much you would need to bump that up to, to be able to, to encourage someone to come, so.
It's a good suggestion, you might want to do a study.
And just see what they have, see what they're paying, if districts actually have one, let's see what they're paying. Are we super far off, or are we in line?
And the other thing is, I have, I had in my memory that, that the RBTs could be, she, she had known we'd be able to add those. If we needed to add, if we needed to cut some there, that's where she decided to do it.
The BCBA.
RBTs.
Those four. Yeah, I think we decided to do that one.
I think one of the thoughts there was, this was appreciated, BCBA, maybe not a clear enough vision at this point to, to move forward with that. So needed, thought was needed, let's put it on there, but if we need to cut that, that's a place to put our students.
Well, she must see a reason.
Yeah.
Well, it's, you know, just from an organizational standpoint, it just, we, we hadn't had, we were at zero in this area. We added a full-time, that seemed a little quick to us as a group, to, and add two more the very next year. It's, it's brand new, and let's let it develop a little bit and let, let her get her feet under her and, and give it one more year to see what we're at.
Gotcha, yeah. So, so we are giving them, or we are not? Now it's supposed to bump higher.
The BCBA support aids, we're, we're recommending we hold for a year on that one.
So that, but that's something you can tell us.
Right, I don't cut that one.
I was gonna say, I don't want to cut that one, but that's me, I think if Claire's come in with clear eyes and trying to get us in line with, with the state, and she sees that her people need help, I mean, I want to be in line with what the state's saying.
But I get what Paula's saying, let's not, it, it should be like a slow and steady growth, not rush into this.
I get that, I get that.
I know words in Claire's mouth, just in our conversations, I think, one of, why, that was one of the requests. She was wondering, can we build some efficiencies in just making sure that we're running well with the one we already currently have, the BCBA teacher working with her professionals that we already have at the schools, as opposed to hiring additional ones to do some of the work there. And, and some of that is just growing pains of, of having a new BCBA.
Maybe that's something we could add even in the year, mid-year, if we find it.
Well, yeah, well, and if she needs two, or does she need one?
That's a good suggestion, we can, we can put, hold on it right now and get, kind of get.
Put one in there.
But that's what I'm wondering, is, do we put one?
Kind of get a vision in the school of what they would be. We've never had these in the district.
That's what I'm wondering, if we put, like Jason was saying, put in one and let's see.
I like that idea.
If we really.
If we need it.
I like that idea. See what it does.
Let's see what it does for us, and if.
They don't always have to spend what we approve, right?
So it'd be twenty-six, four?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I like that. All right, now we're to growth positions.
So do you want to give a quick review on what a growth position is? I mean, I know it seems obvious.
Yeah, our high school is growing.
So a growth position, we don't, we don't really count, we, we don't really count it as a new part of the budget because it's, it comes with, it comes with a budget as, as we grow. So if, a growth position's tied to a number of students, and that number of students will bring that much money with them as part of the WPU to pay for the position. So it's not a new position, it's a, there's a difference between a new position and a growth position.
If, if we did not add these positions, then the class sizes at the high school would balloon. And so this is just trying to keep the class sizes steady, and the, and the new growth funds that we get from the state revenue, WPU, as a rule, will pay for these.
Then like those special ed, it's the number of holders they have, which is the big deal. And so like if you have a high school right now, they're bumping up into the thirties, which is starting to be really high from their loan. And so, once you get up to, so even, even if let's say thirty was our number, it's gonna grow and you can't go, you're gonna overwhelm those special ed teachers. So to get one now would be a good thing.
The counselors, were you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Ann.
Well, I was just gonna say, Cory and I were at the meeting last night, and they were talking about different classes for the district because we did see a slight increase in special ed. And I know you haven't gotten numbers from the state, but we had no idea what class district we are. Like, are we per second, third, fourth on funding for special ed? Do we know what they, they were talking about? Okay, maybe it was just for that bill, I don't know.
Their size of district is.
Maybe that's what they were trying to.
Probably what they were referring to.
We were trying to figure that out. Okay, that's all I could think of was that.
I've never heard that.
Okay.
So, okay, so can I throw something out there?
You bet.
That I heard. Is there a need for an online school assistant for Melissa?
So, so one, one of the plans we have right now, just so you know this, is, it's not an increase, it was on here, this is only just a copy. But there, there, right now with the COVID thing, so we boosted up, and in boosting up so that we could run a middle-level, decent middle-level online school, we basically took on some extra FTEs, and so they've been at, at tip and notice half-time. We really don't need to replace those, so what we're doing is to, to get, keep our online bolstered. We're gonna take those four teachers that have been doing half-time middle school online, and we're gonna kick them over in underneath Melissa, so four more half-time teachers in the core areas.
So she'll get some.
So she's gonna get significant help, actually.
No additional cost.
No additional cost. But we'll just take those two and put them over there, I think the high school's excited for that, with the numbers more as we kind of. Down into the numbers, and so, and the kids need, they need some human support in those areas. I think we talked with you guys, the difference between those that are supported and those that are not in the pass rate. So we just need to up our efforts there, what, for those kids that are doing that.
Thanks.
So Jason, would you like to speak on that counselor?
The counselor, we use a three-fifty-to-one ratio in the secondary schools to, as our kind of. to, as our kind of target point. And we've, we've, we've hit that, rather than we, we really could have hired a half last year and re, rather than do that, we put that off a year in this meeting so that we could just wait until we had enough to, to be able to hire full because we can hire. It's just easier to hire full time. And so that's our, that's the kind of ratio that we use for counseling positions in secondary schools.
To speak to the whole picture on Jason a little bit of both this counselor. As rapidly as the high schools grow, one of the things we do now, plan is you take that interim position. So Jason would have liked a half last year, but if we could have found an interim last year, that's a half and then you wait for it to grow and maybe that intern's awesome and then you let him be there. So you get this rotation going in fast growing areas. Or if you can get a quality intern, keep them on, and then you just keep going that. And if they're not a quality intern, then you go back out. We kind of work that back and forth. So you can see that with our growth projection, you can see that back and forth coming. So you're not giving a half down on one year. That's probably the end of our future.
The elementary teacher, do we know what school that's going to?
We're actually watching a couple of grade levels. Although I'm particularly concerned that some of the grade levels are getting a little high. Every year, they're approaching thirty, or they're at thirty. So.
Upper grades.
In the upper grades. And so this was on there because I'm fairly certain that with the growth, we're, we're going to have one grade level at least that.
I worry with our, we, how we've shifted members, what was it, a year ago? That Daniel's Canyon, Allison can kick up. You look at all the homes being built over there right now.
Oh, yeah.
So you're just going to have to wait to see what registers.
And we are kind of nimble on our feet with, with elementary positions. If we, if we get, you know, a month from now or summertime or whatever it is, as soon as we see, when we typically hit a certain number, we'll add a teacher. Because again, it's a growth position. So that's not, the decision we make today is not set in stone on elementary. We should make a change a lot between now and when school starts.
On a couple of those growth positions, the, the history one specifically, every history teacher that we have over there is teaching multiple.
Two or two.
At least, at least one, at least one.
For the record, no.
No, not that. At least one prep, if not two. And so if we hire, if, if we throw another FTE at it, it's not going to cost a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred because we can, we can reduce the number of preps we buy from existing teachers. And so I just, I think that's closer, Stacy. On that one specific line, on, on line thirty-four, instead of one twenty-seven, if, if we just put like eighty-five thousand instead of one twenty-seven, well, put it over on the, put it over in column E, leave it there. Because I know the, the one teacher who is leaving, retiring this year, we're buying two of his preps. And that's like twenty-something thousand, so.
So the one person retiring is actually a one and a third teacher retiring. Who's that?
Bill Craft.
Is he going?
And then, it seemed like Sean talked like the history people postponed, or the, the English people postponed a year.
So.
So the, the English isn't going to be necessary this year, so put a postponement on that.
Which one?
The English. Sean, before he left yesterday, after having talked with the administration over there, felt like that could be, that could wait a year. And class sizes are going to be out of, out of control. But the others, he felt very strongly.
There you go, Stacy. Wipe them all out.
So what are the class sizes between the classes right now then?
I, I don't know. I don't know.
Todd, do you know about where they were at for English class sizes?
Conversation?
I haven't seen that spreadsheet.
Class sizes are typically in the. You know, when we're in the thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, we feel okay. When we start creeping up into thirty-four, thirty-five, we start getting itchy. And when they're over that, we're just like, all right, it's done.
I mean, if we know we're going to get a little bit of growth in the summer, I'm just.
We, we buy an awful lot of preps in English as well, almost every.
And that kind of depends on how recently we've, we've added an English one. They're, they're, you know, they hit at different times, obviously.
You know, those, those preps being bought is one of the ways that you put more kids in a school. Because, I mean, you've got, you've got a crop that's taking on the load of a teacher and a third in the same classroom. So that, that starts breaking up a little bit. That's, that's going to burden our classrooms. You've got to have classrooms for those teams, like right now, it's just crop being around one and a third. So those, those pressures will get in on us as we move forward. And I think you guys will feel that and maybe hear that a little bit. But the classroom space just is, is vanishing more than it already is. So just be aware of those conversations could kick in.
I think a little bit of capital, just so we can see how much money is in that to purchase the most high school.
It wasn't, could have, we're just talking general fund usually today. The portable's cost, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand. And we're going to, I mean, there would be plenty of room to buy some portables.
Because you have all these growth positions, classrooms, early classrooms.
Yeah, I don't know where, where they would be putting some of these folks.
Well, for the counselor we've talked about is that, that existing lab that's in the council office. I don't know if you can think of that. Take in the back sort of fifteen, twenty feet of that, putting some temporary offices back there and, and putting anybody who doesn't need confidentiality, the offices in there in those so that we can use the confidential spaces for counseling. Things like that as well.
Then we could use the elevator.
Stairway.
That's so sad that that's what we're resorting to.
You did, you did get to a point with the others, you put the teachers on cards and they were the teachers.
We saw a few doing that already.
So we do, you might see some more of that.
I, that, we heard in the FSP meetings that going to teachers, that's not a good environment for a teacher.
I hate that.
I still can't get over the, what was that? Room at Old Mill, not room.
That's the best.
Education going on in there, it's nuts.
I think the Catholic budget will be nice to look at sometime in the next couple of months. Okay, just so we can figure out.
Well, I can tell you that the current year, you know, we bought that, we bought the Sawmill property for two. Just a million five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And we're, we're going to add about three million to our fund balance. So there's plenty of room for, for portables. And science.
Good. How can we line them up on six south so everybody can see them?
Yeah, exactly.
Are those portables at two fifty, those still don't have bathrooms though?
No. Bathrooms and portables, I'm running, running the lines out. I, I don't know where we'd even connect. Okay. Okay. So Stacy, put the, yeah, line thirty-five, take it right over as well to D and E. So with the discussion, with, with Cory's sharp pencil, he took nine hundred thousand dollars off of that wish list.
Cory keeps just striking stuff off the ledger for us.
That's why, that's why he, that's why he got elected.
I know he ran against.
Because they know and they got somebody in here to come in.
The Braille list? We put the, because we're going to kind of look into the visually impaired teacher. The Braille list, do we, is that about what we would pay or is that what we're just?
It would be one twenty-seven, five, it would be lower.
Yeah, so they put fifty and twenty.
Claire thought it was about fifty thousand because it's a certified position. A Braille list, it's not a teacher position.
So there's no health insurance involved? So is Braille list usually a blind teacher?
No, not at all. No, they, they're just trying to learn Braille.
They take all the teaching materials into a Braille.
Okay, they just have a skill set to do that. To change it to.
That's what we're talking about.
It's time intensive.
This district's done some really cool stuff with our home children. Really, really tough stuff. To watch, I have no idea. So now, Stacy, go back to, if, if you, are we okay with that list for now?
Does it start at four yet?
So let's, let's, let's go back to the front page, the summary page, and go to optically.
No, no.
Look at it, you remember.
Eighteen over there. And the formula is, is.
Just go ahead and click over on. Just put equal and go click the, so on there, the words, click over on the other page.
Now click on detail. And go over to E. E thirty-six. And hit enter. So now instead of, instead of having two, you know, just over three million or just under three million to work with negotiations, now we have over four. So that sounds like sense?
So the que, the question that I have, is that formula before we start getting into what the state gives?
No. The state, the state gives up there on line thirteen.
Estimated, isn't it?
That's estimated, okay, yeah. And so when you hear, and this is, this is a question for all of us. So when you hear the state come back with a percentage for the teacher bases?
Well, they say they gave a six percent raise on the WPU. Is what they're taking, is what they're saying.
That's what they're saying. So is that included in the thirteen? Or is that, is that included in the thirteen? Is that separate from the four million? I'm just trying to figure out, is that money?
Line thirteen?
Yeah, the six percent. So the six, do we have to come up with the six percent anywhere? Or is that given to us and goes straight through to the teachers?
The six percent is given to us.
It's given to, that's.
And then we start with a few things. We start with number one, step and lane.
Okay.
And Keith, you just said two and a half percent.
Yeah.
So two and a half.
Twenty-four million for step and lane.
Two and a half of the six percent is going to go to step and lane. So that's just to maintain our step, step and lane as is. Then the next thing is the insurance trades. And that's, that's big, you missed that.
Yeah.
It's big this year.
It was zero last year. Yeah.
What do you figure the insurance rates out of the six percent? Have you done it?
Six, four percent, basically, that's your estimate.
So we're now, it's gone. So the, so the six percent from the state is gone already between insurance and step and lane.
Yeah.
I think there is a misconception with some educators.
Well, for sure, they think they're getting a six percent rate.
Six percent, it's a six percent rate. It says six percent on the WPU.
Right.
But then you guys determine how to budget, which goes to insurance.
And the two that come off very quickly are step and lane, just to keep people progressing and insurance, because that's what we've done historically.
But teachers do have that misconception.
Yeah, definitely does. That's why I asked because I'm.
Then fourteen, then there's your, your ability to do additional if you want, just the local.
Addition of the local lobby there.
Growth, growth in our valuations.
Yes, yes.
But Keith pointed out, Tom, he's been, he thinks he's very conservative on the tax increase for the county and the, the state revenue. Except both of me thinks he's pretty conservative on. So there may, there may potentially be one more there to work with.
We'll, we'll know a lot better as soon as we get the state legislative estimate. And that should be, I mean, we're, we have our meetings in April, you have your meetings in April. It's got to be done by then.
So you're going to know that pretty quick.
Yeah.
CT got ours. And then you always, the local one, you won't know, you're always pushing the heck out of them to get something from that.
Yeah, they, I joked yesterday, they, they finally set their rates, like, I get, I get their assessed valuations mid-June and they want rates the next day. You know, and that's.
So. Policy review meeting is April eleventh, twelfth. Keith's going to go, you're planning on going with that.
So we'll get.
They got to do it by then.
They'll have a definitive answer for us on that, on that day.
Well, that's six percent is as high as I've ever heard from the state coming out.
It improves inflation too. And the inflation has averaged over five years. So it doesn't, this year's huge inflation, it's not really a factor. It's not a huge factor this year, next year, it continues to stay high. It'll be higher.
Phew, yeah, it's.
Because it's killing us.
It's pretty drastic right now.
And then where are we on the county, state, or state? On how many years we still have left? One more year.
So this is just a curiosity thing, maybe Sean said it, I'll say it and then I'll ask it later. Me and, we've already asked the question.
And then the last thing that we can always do when it comes to salaries, and we'll talk about it later, is we have a fund balance of fifteen million. So you can always tap into that. It's separate. We've done that in the past.
Okay. Anything else, Keith? You got what you need to know?
I think so.
Any, anything from the directors we need to add here? Board members, any, any questions? Concerns?
So tonight during the executive session, we just, we're going to talk a little bit more about the, the negotiations and the salaries and the Christmas bonuses.
Be the appropriate place to meet.
Yep.
Alrighty, well, we've got forty-five minutes until our regular study session begins. That's a long enough to do whatever you need to do. And we'll come back, have the study session from five to six. We do have dinner for you at six upstairs and regular board meeting at six-thirty. Executive session following.